Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the first city council meeting of 2025. Ms. Hilbert, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Delgarza?
I am present.
Councilman Kidder?
Here.
Councilwoman Butler?
Present.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young?
Here.
And Mayor Crocker?
Here. If you would, please rise and join me for the pledges, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Again, welcome, everyone, and Happy New Year. We will jump straight into announcements and reminders. Mr. Garza, do you have anything for us?
Good afternoon, mayor and councilmembers. Happy New Year. I do have a few announcements for you this evening. All non-emergency city offices will be closed on Monday, January 20th in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. The Victoria Public Library will open, but will close early at 5:00 p.m. that day. Offices will reopen at 8:00 a.m. on Tuesday, January 21st. Additionally, a couple of updates that you might have seen in today's newsletter and and press releases that were put out. The city is lifting all mandatory restrictions on water usage after recent rainfall throughout our region helped to replenish the city's water supply. Under stage one of the plan, residents are no longer required to limit their nonessential water usage. However, the city is still encouraging residents to be mindful of their water consumption and practice voluntary conservation measures. To sign up for Water Wise, visit www.victoriatwaterwise.com. Or for more information about the drought contingency plan, please visit victoriatx.gov/droughtplan. Additionally, you might have seen that our duck pond has been restocked. Residents can once again catch rainbow trout at the Riverside Park Duck Pond. Texas Parks and Wildlife stocked the pond today with 1,000 rainbow trout. Parks and Recreation has a limited number of child and adult fishing poles available for public use at its office at 532 McRite Drive. For more information, contact the Parks Office at 361-485-3200 or parks@victoriatx.gov. And those are the announcements I have for the evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move on to public and employee recognitions.
All right. So first, we'll, April's like, we starting off the year off. So first, we'll tackle the Keep Victoria Beautiful Beautification Award first, and so I'll ask Krista Uecker to come up and address that.
Thank you. Hello, mayor and council. Happy New Year. Before we announce our beautification award winner, I wanted to remind everybody of our volunteer appreciation event for Keep Victoria Beautiful. This will be our third time to have it, and every time it's just better and better. It'll be next Tuesday at 5:30 at the community center. And it's to honor and just highlight our volunteers throughout this past year, what we've accomplished, and thank our supporters as well. So we hope many of you can be there. And of course, all of our volunteers out there, we want to make sure they come, they can RSVP by calling 485-3230 or keepvictoriabeautiful.org. They can sign up there. So I am also a one-person show today because Meredith Byrd is not here, so I'm announcing our beautification award winner. And for the month of January, we are awarding this to a location that is in a very busy spot at Zach Lenz Parkway, which is Longhorn Steakhouse. And I'm noticing how interesting that photo looks. But we got the sign in there. So as you know, this opened last March. They've been very busy. It's in a great location right there by the mall, and they do just have a lot of traffic. And as the manager, John Pendleton, said today, they get a lot of trash blown in there from that wind, so it's a constant issue. And this is one of those spots we like to highlight because just keeping it trash-free is big enough. And we know places that don't do that or aren't able to as well, and so we want to highlight those that do a great job. So congrats to Longhorn Steakhouse. And unfortunately, Mr. Pendleton could also not be here today. He just got back from vacation and had no one to cover the restaurant as manager. So anyway, so congratulations to Longhorn Steakhouse. And go by and say hello and congrats. So thank y'all.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Uecker.
Next time, let them know I'm happy to swap, and I'm happy to go be at the restaurant. One, I do have an employee recognition. Very quickly, mayor, I'd like to recognize Captain Jason Turner with our police department, if you wouldn't mind standing briefly. He recently completed the three parts of the FBI LITA Trilogy Program. The FBI LITA emphasizes purposeful growth for police leaders through continuous development. The Trilogy Series includes the Supervisor Leadership Institute, Command Leadership Institute, and Executive Leadership Institute, offers a comprehensive leadership education program. Completing all three courses provides a framework for effective leadership at all levels of law enforcement. And as always, we're very appreciative of our employees that choose to continue their professional development. And so, Captain Turner, thank you so much for your dedication. That's all I got.
That's it. Okay. That was, that was a lot. Thanks. Items from council. Does anybody have items from council?
Yeah, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I've noticed, or at least I perceived noticed, and I may be incorrect, but I hope that I am. I don't think I am. An increase in some of the criminal activity in the Queen City neighborhood. And I'd like to ask staff to look into, to, to that. If that's the case, then addressing, what are we doing to address the immediate issues? Are there, are there underlying root problems in that area that we don't know or maybe do know? And then what can we do to address those if, if that's the case?
Sure.
So there's a lot, I guess, about that, that neighborhood itself, and I'm, and I'm aware of some issues.
Correct. Yes, and as you know, and for the benefit of, of those tuning in, the other council members, it's been a focus area of ours for quite some time to try and redevelop the Queen City neighborhood. And you're right, it includes law enforcement, it includes just a different, variety of different groups and departments. So let us kind of huddle internally, and we'll plan on providing an update to you on that effort, specifically addressing your question on the crime element as well, maybe in the next meeting or two. If that's okay.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. No rush. We just wanted to, to make sure that we do address that going forward.
Yeah. No, I appreciate the reminder because I know it's something that, that we've talked about and has come up in the past, and we haven't talked about it in a while, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good. Thank you, Dr. Young. We'll look forward to getting that. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we will move into citizens' communication. We'll start with Michael Vondro. Our first comment of 2025.
Oh, thanks.
Welcome back, sir. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Michael Vondro. I no longer live at 2204 East North Street, Victoria Oaks and stuff. I don't want to say where my new place is because management really don't like me. I don't know why. I try to get along with everyone. But I would like to thank the cook at the Salvation Army. They made some linguine chicken, you know, and I give it five stars. I ate some of that yesterday. It was very good. It was like a $20 meal at a restaurant. It was very good. And also, I don't have to pay the lot fee anymore because I sold my trailer. And it appeared they were trying to get me to still pay my lot fee. So I went to the personal injuries law firm. I drove there to Houston. And, you know, they locked the door where no one can get in, but if you bang on it enough, you can eventually get in. And the paralegal let me in, and she talked to me, and she was very professional. And she asked, is there any messages you want to give him? I said, just do your job, you know? And I would like to see him fix up his trailer park, you know, and stuff like that. And I'm not paying, I told her straight up, I'm not paying that lot fee. I sold it. And they also have it blocked to where you can't even move your trailer, and someone else bought it. And I was hoping they could keep it there because I have a feeling what they're going to do, they're going to charge them lot fee, and they're not going to let them move it because it's blocked up. It looks like a third world country there. And I don't know if anyone's been there, but I would advise you, don't go there, you know, just don't go there, you know? And also, I would like to thank everyone for the support and the legal department for the city of Victoria for helping with the trailer park because it ain't going to get fixed without the legal department. It's that simple. And I appreciate it. And on 401 North, on 401, I got a brain freeze. 401 Liberty Street, it looked like someone broke in. There's people living in that house again. They broke windows and they broke the wood off. Someone had told me that and stuff. And I appreciate the legal department for taking care of that, but they broke into it again, and that's right by the public library. And I also want to thank the city manager before Jesus that helped with the trailer park. They put a lot of resources into fixing it. And the lesson to be learned, even if you're a famous personal injury attorney, you still got to fix your property. It's that simple. You're not above the law. Thanks, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vondro. One other card, Mr. Harley Fisk. Hello, Mr. Fisk. Welcome back and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to all of you, all right? I'd like to speak tonight in two parts, trying to keep my legal status correct. First, as a member of the Friends of the Victoria Public Library, I wish to thank everyone who was involved in the gingerbread event at the community center just before Christmas. That includes the center staff, the library staff, those organizations that set up booths, those people that provided music and security, and the fellow members of the Friends of the Victoria Public Library, and anyone who I might have missed, all right? Teamwork involved led to a successful and enjoyable time to the citizens of Victoria. I would like to remind everyone that the Friends will be having our next book sale on January 19th through the 25th. The first day is reserved for members only, which I believe you are a member, if I remember correctly. All right, membership is only $10 a year. You can join the day of the event, right? We're well-stocked in most categories of books, and this time we also have a lot of CDs and DVDs, right? I mean, a lot of. Hardcover books are generally $2 with most others. Most of the rest of the items are $1, the exception being some special books that are priced a little bit higher. The proceeds from our sales are used to fund library events such as the gingerbread event, summer reading programs, and the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program, right? Switching gears and speaking only as an individual now, all right? Not as a representative of any organizations that I'm part of. I read recently that there has been an increase of over 18% in the number of unhoused people nationally. This number follows a 12% increase the previous year, and it's the highest since the federal government began an annual count of the homeless population in 2007. There are myriad reasons for the increase, which has affected over 770,000 people, many of which are working adults, families, and children. I am not going to pretend that I can offer any solutions. I did read that a group of Amish men managed to build 12 tiny houses in 48 hours at an average cost of $25,000. Perhaps something like this could be considered as part of the infill projects here in Victoria. I know there are many intelligent individuals and groups here in the crossroads that could develop cost-effective and innovative solutions to minimize the number of unhoused people. And I'd also like to thank all those people that are participating in the warming events during this cold spell, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. All right, that concludes then citizens' communication. I believe we do not have any items with public hearings, so we'll move straight to the consent agenda. Ms. Hilbert?
Yes, sir. Item D1 is the adoption amendments to the regular meeting held on December 17th, 2024. Item D2 is a resolution approving amendment to Resolution 2024-190, updating the contract amount with Power Secure Incorporated from $85,345.56 to $112,245.56. Item D3 is a resolution approving a variance to Section 21-138A, Table 21, minimum lot width for AC-Hon subdivision, re-subdivision number two located at 706 and 708 East Constitution Street and 101 North Cameron Street. Item D4 is a resolution authorizing the execution of an election services contract with Victoria County Elections Administrator for the administration of city elections.
Thank you, Ms. Hilbert. Do I have any motions with respect to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda as ready.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Moving on then to Section E. Action against our council. We'll take up E1 and E2 as they deal, together, as they deal with the same subject matter, but we will need to take separate action on each of those. So Ms. Hilbert, if you'd call those two for us, please.
Yes, sir. Item E1 is a resolution hearing and appeal of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, recommendation to deny variances to Section 21-63A7 and 21-63A11 for property located at 209 Chantilly Street. Item E2 is a resolution hearing and appeal of the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny a variance to Section 21-138A, Table 21, land use table minimum off-street parking for a townhouse located at 209 Chantilly Street.
Thank you. And again, we'll need to act on these separately, but Ms. Fulgham will provide us with a presentation of information that applies to both of these. So, Ms. Fulgham, thank you.
So these three variants, ultimately, it's three variances for the property at 209 Chantilly Street. The way the UDO is structured, we have everything in one division, which is building codes, goes to our construction, essentially Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And then more of your developments type or planning type of regulations continue to go to the Planning Commission. And that's, was how we had the ordinance set up when it was in different chapters. And we, we kept that because, of course, our Board of Adjustments are the experts on building codes and our Planning Commission, or sorry, the experts on planning-related items. So the three types of variances that are being requested is an emergency egress, variance to emergency egress, to fire separation, fire code, and off-street parking. So the property owner originally came to Development Services and applied for a permit to enclose a carport. And the, her property is a townhome that was developed in the early 80s in a large townhome development. You can see the aerial there on the photograph. These townhomes are originally developed with steel carports, which of course are not enclosed. And because they're steel and made of non-combustible, they do meet, did meet all of the building code, fire code separation requirements at the time. And then, of course, townhomes do have fire separation, firewalls to separate each unit. So the property owner applied for a building permit and was denied because we did not see a path forward in a way that the, the permit was to enclose the carport into a garage. And so that permit was denied because there was not a way to meet all applicable codes. About a year later, we received a complaint from a neighbor that the carport had been enclosed into a garage. And so our inspectors went on site, issued a stop work order, and now the property owner is applying for variances in order to obtain those building permits. So the specific variances that are being requested, to where you can really get there, and they're with some modifications. They're, they're really not egregious or health, life, safety concern variances. Although I will say, well, let me explain what the two variant, two that are not as big of an issue, and that is the off-street parking. The development code does require that all single, all single-family units, a townhome, one townhome is a single-family unit, have two off-street parking spaces. And that those two off-street parking spaces are not enclosed in a garage. So the code is very specific that a garage does not count for two off-street parking spaces. So that's one variance. But there's a lot of on-street parking. You know, we have, we do regular parking variances. Two spots in this neighborhood is not going to overwhelm the neighborhood. The other variance is to the actual fire separation. So currently, the carport as constructed does not have adequate firewalls for the fire separation. Modifications could be done to the structure to comply with the fire separation, adding additional drywall or modifying the structure so that you do have firewalls between the structures. So those two things could potentially, you know, either not be a huge detriment to the area or we can overcome with, with additional modifications to the structure. But I do want to always remind council that when it comes to planning, scale is always a factor. So if you were to approve this variance for these, for those two items, for this one townhome, it's probably not a big issue, but if you were to then look at the entire development of 42 townhomes and apply and grant variances to off-street parking for every single one of those, or grant variances to the fire separation for every single one of those, then you're starting to have a parking problem in the neighborhood and a health, life, safety issue with the potential to, for fire to spread throughout a development. The one variance that we really can overcome is the emergency egress. And a picture's worth a thousand words, so I'll just kind of go through these pictures real quick and show you what I'm talking about. So this is the carport that was enclosed into a garage. The garage door has not been completed yet, but it's a three-wall structure at this point because the stop work order stopped it mid-construction. So you can see those are not firewalls. And the way the townhomes are constructed is there's, you know, a separation between where the back wall of the townhome was and the carport. Some of those have been enclosed, are covered, which a covered porch is, is still egressed to the exterior. So this one has been covered, but when you enclose the carport into a garage, now it becomes like a fully enclosed structure. And you can't really see very well, but you can see the fridge in the corner of the photo, and you can see the trim above that fridge. That is the trim to a window that is accessing a bedroom. So one of the variances, or the code requires that a bedroom have egressed to exterior at all times. And so with the enclosure of the carport into a garage, therefore fully enclosing this space, it's not considered, that bedroom does not, no longer has egressed to the exterior. And so that's the code that we really can't get around. Essentially, egressed to that building is now into a trapped space. So here's the rest of the, the photos. And a section of the ordinance that clearly defines garages do not count as off-street parking for residential uses. And that, of course, there, that, there is a, they all back up to a common alley, common drive. And so there's still not enough room with, even if the garage were to be enclosed, for the off-street parking to be met.
How much, how much space is needed?
An off-street parking space is 10 by 20.
10 by 20, okay.
So kind of going back to the hand-drawn site plan, you can see that enclosed porch where we have the egress, the bedroom, emergency egress that is trapped.
Is there a clicker you can use? Because just talking about these things doesn't...
Yeah, so the highlighted, I don't think there's a pointer.
We're looking at 209 that's highlighted there, correct?
Yeah, okay, I've got one. Okay, so here is the townhouse that we're talking about. And we didn't draw the interior layout, but this is a bedroom window that does go into that enclosed area. This is the back door and the door to the garage. And then there was, if you saw in the photos, there was a walkway to the side of the garage. And then this is the enclosed, the carport that was enclosed into a garage. Again, it's not fully enclosed yet with, because the garage door is, is not yet been placed on it. So you can see these red lines are firewalls that, of course, comply with fire code. And there are no firewalls with the combustible material that the garage has been constructed out of. Remember, these were steel carports, and so steel is non-combustible, so it meets fire code and can be built upon each other. So there's no firewalls. At these walls, this bedroom does not have egress to the outside. And then there are off-street parking is no longer in compliance because garages do not count as off-street parking. So in summary, those are the three variances that are being requested. As this agenda item states, both the Board of Appeals and Planning Commission, both of them did recommend denial of each of their respective variances as well as staff, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions for Ms. Fulgham?
The egress, the emergency egress is the issue that can't be. If that wall was removed, does that, does that solve for that?
Well, then it's no longer a garage. It would be back to being a carport.
So that enclosed porch, then it...
It's also the wall to the garage.
Okay, so there's no way to, to hold the garage up, I guess, is... I guess my question is, is the, am I framing that correctly? The wall that's making it an enclosed porch, if that was removed?
That's also the wall that, so it would be, then be going into a garage.
Okay.
So that, yeah, because you're enclosing that space, you're effectively enclosing that, you would have to, you have to have that bedroom out to outside.
And that enclosed porch was not present?
With the garage wall.
Previously?
So it was a covered porch, but the construction of this wall and then putting in a garage door is what makes that enclosed. When it was all open, it was basically a covered porch, and that counts as egressed to the outside.
So Ms. Fulgham, on the, on the picture that we're looking at, on the enclosed porch to the far right of that, I see the wall that's, I guess, what I'll call the, the sidewall on the, on the garage, yes, there. What's between the edge, end of that wall and the wall of the actual unit itself? Right there where your cursor is?
So that is, that's open.
Okay.
I mean, it's covered, so it's a covered walkway.
I think that's what's confusing us, is the picture that you pointed out, we saw daylight. And so I think that's what's confusing us. If you go back to the one with the refrigerator.
Yeah, so this wall is basically what encloses that space.
That, so that's the wall that's causing...
Go back to the picture, though, Julie.
I'm trying to go there, there.
Yeah, keep going.
So that's one end. The other end is open.
There's a fence.
So that does not count as... So, that does not count as access to the window?
Mm, and this is the window.
And, and I think that's what we have to accept, that that's what...
And I guess my question is, explain, if you can, or, or to me, just kind of help me out, why that's not access to the outside?
Probably have to call on Rick.
We need Rick, okay, that's fair.
As the building official. I think, I think it's scale, again, um, the, the, it's substantially enclosed.
Got it, okay.
So, the building code and the fire code both, uh, require the, the window to be an emergency egress directly to the outside, open and obstructed to the sky. And that's, that's what's required by code. Uh, that there is, is, uh, once you put three walls up, we, cause, we consider things enclosed. And, and that's not only an egress window for someone to get out, that's an emergency ingress window for, if the fire department has to access with their backpacks and other equipment, they have to go through there and get, get inside that window to rescue people that are overtaken by smoke.
Okay.
And, and I can see that, I mean, that could easily have fire in that area. It's, it's not just outside.
And, um, we also would like to point out the, the scale. Um, you know, if, again, granting this variance, um, doesn't necessarily pose as a huge health, life, safety when it comes to, um, you know, basically the off-street parking or, you know, we can get the walls there. But when you, if you were to grant a variance to all forty-two of these townhomes, then we would have a lot of concerns for the health and life and safety aspect.
So, that walkway is not open on both ends?
No, no, it's not.
Only on that far end that we're looking at?
Yes.
But not this end?
I want to hear from Ms. Reed, but before we do, is there any other questions for Ms. Fulgham?
So, the other side of that wall is the neighbor?
Mm-hmm, so that, that's, that you look at. Is, is one end, and then the other end is the only open end, that you then turned down that corridor.
And can you talk a little bit, I mean, you're, you're talking about the, uh, off-street as well. Every time I go down that street, it's already full of cars. There, there's not extra parking spaces.
Right, so again, it's two, two spots, um, per townhome that do have, um, are required to have off-street. Of course, I'm sure there's a lot of townhomes that probably have more than two cars, people that own more than two cars occupying it or staying there. And so, it's, it's always a scale thing when it comes to planning. If you were to grant a variance to all forty-two, uh, for the off-street parking, then there would definitely be a parking issue in the neighborhood.
All right, and I understand Ms. Reed is here. Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward to speak to us? Yes, please do, please do. I know you've come and spoken to us before and appreciate you being back, but I, I wanted to give you an opportunity for you to tell us what you'd like us to know in making this decision.
And I appreciate that, and Happy New Year.
Same to you, ma'am.
The one point that I'd like to make is that that back wall, if it comes down, it's going to be replaced with a privacy fence. A privacy fence is what was there before. And every one of those townhomes has a privacy fence on the backside of the porch, which to me is like, almost the same as the wall. I don't see the fire department coming through a privacy fence. I mean, it, it has a gate now, and it would have a gate then, but they're not going to come through the wall, they're going to come through the gate. And the air handler that's on that porch is going to be moved to the outside. I just haven't had it done because I don't know what we're doing yet with the garage.
Okay. Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Yes.
See, may I have any other questions before we get into motions and discussion?
For Julia Rick, so the adjoining townhouses, that they have a privacy fence where that wall is now, is it open at both ends, the privacy fence on the other townhouses? Are they open at both ends or also open on one end?
Well, I'm sure some are, some aren't maybe, but, uh, privacy fences are not prohibited to be in that place, um, so that doesn't apply. And it is simpler for fire department to access through a privacy fence and a solid wall.
Yeah, a, a privacy fence doesn't have the same structural integrity or strength as a wall.
Good. Any other questions? And, um, Ms. Lacy, just so we're all very clear, what's before us as proposed is a resolution that is denying the variance, correct?
Yes, so you have two resolutions in front of you, one from the Planning Commission's recommendation, one from the Board of Appeals' recommendation, both of which are recommend, um, are upholding the recommendation of either of those boards and denying the variances as requested.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all clear what the, that the, what the resolutions are, so. All right, with that, um, let's take these in order then, and we'll start with E one. And does anybody have a motion with respect to item E one?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I am not, uh, unsympathetic, uh, but we do have Board of Adjustments and a Planning Commission who take their job seriously also, make recommendations to us. Um, and so, I move that we adopt E one.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
I think you need to be more specific than that.
Yeah, I think that, I can give you the exact language if you would like me to. Um, cause as, basically as written, it's that you uphold the recommendation of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and deny the variances.
I move that we uphold the decision of the Board of Adjustments and deny the variances.
I'll second that for the sake of discussion.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second, so discussion. Uh, does anybody have anything that they would like to add to this? I, I, I can, I can start it off and just, you know, what, what concerns me about this is certainly, I, I understand Ms. Reed's, um, as, as Ms. Scott so eloquently put it, sympathy for the, the situation. Um, I, I think, you know, where, where I struggle with this is that, that the permit was denied, and in the face of a denial, that the construction went forward. Um, I, you know, I, I, I struggle with that from the standpoint of we have these in place, we have the permit requirements in place for a reason. Um, obviously, this, um, is a very important reason, which is fire safety, uh, not only for the occupants of this unit, but also, uh, fire safety for the occupants of the others in, in the, in the other adjoining townhomes. Um, you know, if there was a way to meet that fire safety issue, um, I, you know, I, I, I would be looking for that and, and be more in favor of that, but I just, I just, from what I understand, from what's been presented, I don't know that we can get there. So, uh, but I'm open, any other comments or discussion?
No, I, I, you actually said what I was going to say, in the, the fact that this was built after a denied permit, um, strikes me. And I know that there's a neighbor that has, uh, a garage as well, but, um, I don't know when that was built. It wasn't built during this time, and that's not, I guess, germane to this because we don't have control over that. Uh, we do, you know, this is presented in front of us at this time. Um, the, the off-street parking doesn't bother me, but the, uh, the, the safety of, of the individual and the individuals that live there is, is a paramount, and that's why we have code. And, and so, um, I am for upholding the, um, the board's decision.
My only question, or part of the discussion would be, is there, is there a compromise that could be made as far as enclosing the, um, carport without there being a garage? If she meets all of the fire safety code and that, that egress is opened back up? So, essentially, it's a covered and has sidewalls on the carport, but doesn't have a garage door so that it's still open? Whether that's a dialogue that you have had or that she's been open to?
Um, the egress to the bedroom is the issue. I mean, currently, there's not a garage door, and so, um, you know, she had a carport before, a steel carport structure. Um, if we could have come up with a solution, our permitting staff, it would have never even made it to me, it would have never even gone to Rick. Our permitting staff would have said, you, you do these modifications and we can grant you a permit. But because of the egress to that bedroom, we don't see a, a way to make modifications to be able to issue a permit without the variance to that specific one. Like I said, we could, the other ones, the walls could have been, um, added or modified so that they, they would, had, did have fire separation. It's that egress really that's the fatal flaw.
Ms. Reed, did you have something to add? Please do.
The reason that I went ahead without a permit after waiting a year was that when I asked for the original permit, I was led to believe that the garage next door was going to be told to be taken down because it is not permitted either. And it was, it, it was installed twelve years ago when that woman bought the property. I bought the property looking at her garage and thinking I could do the same thing. The other irony of all this is that she is the neighbor who complained. She's not got both oars in the water, but you could see from my petition, I'm assuming y'all got the packet that I turned in to the planning boards. You could see the majority of the neighbors there are like, what is the problem?
All right, thank you, Ms. Reed. All right, any other discussion?
How many other homes in that area have a garage?
Three, and we haven't really been able to determine. It looks like that her neighbors might have been the latest one built in twenty sixteen, but, um, one, there's, it, it looks like it might, there might have been one, and then a couple of years it was removed or maybe in disrepair and then added back. Um, so two, the appraisal district lists one as being constructed in twenty sixteen, and then two has the same construction date as the, um, townhomes in nineteen eighty-two, eighty-three, or eighty-four. I can't remember which year exactly. Um, but I don't believe that one of those eighty-three or eighty-four, one of those eighty dates is correct. It's hard to know because we don't, they weren't permitted, so we don't have the records. Um, and it, it's hard, you can't tell from the aerials because they were covered carports. And so, it's not like all of a sudden a roof structure, um, appeared. And then, it's also difficult to tell off, we use Google Street View a lot, but because it's facing an interior alley, you can't see all of the Google Street View, so. But there are three, and so, that's where, you know, we're more than happy at council's direction to, um, pursue enforcement on those three. Um, and that's where our concern really is, is a scale issue. If you, if we grant variance for this, we need to grant the variance for the other three or, and then maybe more. And having forty-two enclosed garages, um, that do, do not meet fire code and block egress to bedrooms and whatnot is, um, a really big concern for us.
Yeah. And even though it's a concern, just to be clear, even though it's a concern, doesn't necessarily mean that that's what's going to happen, right? I mean, it's obviously your prerogative.
Sure.
And future council's prerogative, right? To decide whether, you know, you approve this one, not that one, this one, not that one, right? So, I mean, don't think that it's like black or white. You really do have the discretion to approach it how you think is appropriate.
Right, and, and certainly, you know, what's, what's before us today, I think, is, is the existence of these others that were previous, that we don't have all the information on. Um, you know, it's not something we could really dive into and make a decision at this point. Um, I think what we've got, what we're tasked with is making a decision as to this specific item based on the information that we currently have. And if we need to look at those other issues or other items down the road somewhere, then certainly we can do that. But today, we're looking at this specific issue, so.
And, and I think we're also tasked with using the information that we do have, and some of that information is the information of our staff who have understanding of fire codes, have understanding of planning, the reasons for some of these ordinances that we have, that the entire neighborhood may think, well, you know, aesthetically, I don't see a problem with it, and may not have the additional knowledge of what the real issues are for protection of the neighborhood and for their protection. And even though it's a tough call, that's what we, the elected officials get, get to deal with.
And at the end of the day, you know, at, at least from my standpoint, those fire codes are there for a reason. I mean, there's, there's some very real reasons behind it that deal with people's lives, uh, and so, they're, they're not something to, uh, take lightly and brush aside, in my opinion, so.
And just to be clear, Julie, but regardless of how this goes, you could still work with Ms. Reed for an outcome that would maybe provide some relief to her as far as the carport itself goes.
The carport was in compliance and no problem can remain, just need those, um, walls to be removed.
All right, any further discussion? All right, I've got a motion and a second to, uh, deny the requested variances. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, um, then let's move to item E two, which is for the off-street parking. And, and Ms. Fulgham, in terms of this one, if item E one was denied, is item E two, we still need to act upon it correctly, is my understanding?
I would leave that up to, ask Allison for direction. I mean, it kind of becomes a moot point.
Yeah, practically, it becomes a moot point, but it's still an action on, action item on the agenda, so there's, still needs to be a vote for this item.
Okay, I just wanted, wanted to clarify. So, do I have a motion with respect to item E two?
I move we uphold the recommendation of the Planning Commission and deny this variance request.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion on item E two? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Fulgham.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Uh, moving on then, let's move to item E three.
Item E three is a resolution authoriting the city's grant application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for a recreational trails grant to improve the trail at Ted B. Reed Park for an estimated total of three hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and seventy dollars, with the city's responsible for twenty percent cost share of sixty-two thousand five hundred and fourteen.
Hello, Ms. Connelly.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I have recently been working with the Parks Department and the Engineering Department to develop a grant for, uh, Texas Parks and Wildlife's recreational trails program to improve the trail at Ted B. Reed Park. The recreational trail at Ted B. Reed Park. The park is about ten acres. Um, it's on Salem Road, it's actually right next to, uh, Fire Station Number Four, if you're familiar with that. It was deeded to the park for, or to the city for park use in two thousand and six. The walking trail is about point three zero miles, um, but it's currently, the problem with it is, is it's very narrow. Um, a lot of it's maybe less than three feet wide. The composition of it's also kind of a challenge, it's made of crushed granite. Um, it's fine for walking, but you're not going to roll anything on it very easily. Um, and then, of course, um, it, it needs some ADA accessibility upgrades. Um, so the proposal is, basically, we're just going to concrete over the existing trail and make it wider. So, the width is important because multi-use has to be ten feet wide, which means, and it's a safety issue, if you're walking along and somebody's coming with a bike, there's enough room for you both to go.
And you're riding the bike with your arms out like...
Yeah, well, it's, it is really wide, so it's sort of an extra, it, it's sort of an extra, um, measure of safety there. Um, but then, you'll see in the picture, the ten-foot wide's going to be the loop that goes around. And then, we'll add, um, five-foot wide sidewalk to continue along the front of the park, which right now, there's no, like, you can get to the trail, but you have to access it kind of from the parking lot. Um, so we would add that sidewalk to go all the way from the fire station over to Country Lane, which, that's the cross street there. And then, kind of up into the park too, so you could walk from these neighborhoods and these neighboring areas into the park and then loop around if you wanted to walk there. So, um, the construction total isn't mostly just concrete, um, and that's estimated at three twelve, our, uh, participation would be twenty percent, which is sixty-two, five fourteen. And I wanted to just mention a couple of things that, about the recreational trails. Currently, according to the Parks Master Plan, the city has six point six miles of multi-use recreational trails, most of which are in Riverside Park, the rest of it's the Lone Tree Hike and Bike Trail. That's the ten-foot wide, okay? And currently, the existing trail, and even though it's a walking trail, it doesn't qualify as multi-use because of its width and its composition. So, this would add to the overall linear square length of recreational trails within the city, which is recommended in the plan. That was something that, um, was determined through surveys that, um, desired by our citizens. Um, it was recommended by the consultant, um, and it's, uh, apparently is one of the number-one most-used recreational facilities within the city. Um, so, this, this i- is in accordance with what's been recommended in our master plan according to our consultants and our community surveys. I also wanted to speak briefly about some upcoming, um, parks projects, even though I'm the, in the Finance Department and the Grant Administrator, a lot of our planned projects coming up for parks are going to be some or partially or supported by grant funding. For instance, Brownson Park, which was recently completed, we, um, put in new playground. Um, but we'll be seeking grants to put in additional trees and landscaping. But we'll be seeking grants to put in additional trees and landscaping. A lot of our parks, three of our parks will be getting lighting and sidewalk upgrades funded by CDBG funding, which is coming from the entitlement allocation. Pine Tree Park, as you may know, has some improvements coming up, playground equipments and porn plates, surfaces, basketball courts, shade structure, soccer girls, it's going to be really improved. And then we'll be putting, we'll get grants for additional trees there as well, plus the lighting and sidewalk upgrades there too. Meadow Lane Park in 2025, so later this year, I'm expecting we'll put together an application to TPWD for local parks grant to improve Meadow Lane, but that's also going to get lighting and sidewalk upgrades too from CDBG. In 2027, we'll apply for another grant from local parks for, to improve MLK, which that's the lower bubble right there, that's the planned, that's directly from the park's master plan, that layout. And then further into the future, the Riverside, the trails through Riverside Park that need improvement, there are quite a few that need also widening and different surfacing, we'll also seek TPWD recreational trails grant for those into the future, plus there are going to be obviously phased projects there as well. Did you have any questions?
I just want to be clear that the sidewalk up, the sidewalk improvements and upgrades that Katie's referring to in these neighborhood parks are intended to improve the trails that we have.
The network, yes.
In, in our network. Now those, because those are small parks, you know, won't be 10-foot wide sidewalks or trails, but like Bronson Park, for example, currently doesn't have anything in the form of a sidewalk, trail, or route, or path around it. And so that's why we felt it was important to include an update on these parks, because there, there's a much broader, big-picture effort that we're undertaking to improve and add more trails, regardless of the width of them.
Right, right, and I think the lighting upgrades are important for each of these as well, so.
Absolutely, well, that's a huge safety issue, yes.
Yes, right. Thank you very much. Any questions, anyone has? All right, with that then, are there any motions with respect to item E3 authorizing the grant application?
Move to approve item E3.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? E3 passes, we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Think that would be a great improvement for the, for Tedby Reed Park, so hopefully we'll come through with that. All right, then moving on to item F, City Manager Reports. Mr. Garza, I think you have a couple on deck for us tonight.
A hundred percent. I'm actually really excited about this year's round of annual report updates to you. As you know, and for the benefit of our new council members, every spring, we typically provide, and some, most departments provide annual reports to you. It's a really good time for these reports because it really helps set the foundation for the upcoming budget. And so normally, these annual reports focus 99% of the content and what is said on the achievements from the previous year. I've asked our executive team to expand for this year in particular, to add more information as part of these annual reports on their needs, as well as their priorities moving forward. Because I think it's important, as we have just ongoing conversations about our limited resources, that we remind you or educate you for the first time on what progress we've made with these departments, what the vision is for the department, and where we're headed. And I think that's just important for us to, to, to bring that to the forefront, this year in particular. Additionally, I've asked some departments that normally do not provide an annual report to provide an annual report this year, departments like Building and Equipment Services, so that we can take a deeper dive on topics like our fleet, that had come up with Councilwoman Butler a few meetings ago, as well as some others. And so that's part of the reason why we're starting these annual reports earlier than normal. And so expect to have two or three annual reports at every meeting for the next three to four months, as we go through them one at a time. And at the end, the objective is for you to have a better sense of the amazing work that our team is doing, but more importantly, have a sense of what the need is for that department, and what the director, and what we believe is a priority for that department moving forward. You'll realize that for some departments, it's personnel, for some, it's facilities, for some, it's equipment, for some, it's all of the above. And so my plan is to try and make it as easy as possible and as clear as possible to you and the public on what those needs are for each department. And so to kick it off, we'll have Ashley talk about our Communications Department. She'll, she's going to set the bar really high for, so that every department director and chief after her can just step it up. No pressure.
I would like a walk-up song.
Yeah?
All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. I'm very excited to be presenting to you tonight the Communications and Public Affairs Annual Report. I'd like to start with stating our mission, which does remain the same, and that is to inform and engage our residents to help foster productive education within our community. And we do that through three primary goals. Of course, we like to proactively tell our story about what this organization does and the efforts that we have going on. And then we do so through also engaging content that we produce, and of course, educational development opportunities available to our residents. If you haven't seen it, you should have on your desks our infographic. Keep in mind, this is an all, it is not an all-encompassing list of data that we use, but it does highlight some of the key performance metrics that we use to determine whether we're being successful and how we're performing year over year. And so I'm going to go into each section and talk about some of the work behind each of the data. But first, I want to start on the far left, which is Communications Services Breakdown. And it is what it sounds like. It is any city department that we have provided resources to. And of course, you'll see on the pie chart, that majority of which is our own department, and ultimately, we do communicate to the public. And second to that is, of course, public safety, which includes Fire, PD, and Municipal Court. There is a reason for that, and I'll talk about it a little bit later in this presentation. But first, what do we do during the year primarily? Where does our work go? The first one I wanted to mention is Citizens Academy. It is our free five-week educational program that is available to our residents at no cost. We like to empower them to have some of the context around some of those frequently-asked questions that we see often in the community, and we like them to know the why behind the what, the content, the context around it, and then have them be our brand ambassadors to go out into the community, clarify that information, and simply be more involved at the end of the day. Ultimately, they can even serve on board and commissions, right? That's ultimately the goal. We even had a former participant, who is now a council member, Mark Lofgren. And if you don't believe us, let's hear from a few recent participants.
I found Citizens Academy to be very informative and really helps you understand how their goals all align.
I learned things that will help me to be a great citizen.
The Citizens Academy is great. We see Victoria, see how it's growing.
I would recommend it for anyone, if you want to know why we do things the way that we do and what's going to happen in the future.
And so we don't stop there. We like to encourage them to attend all three of our city's educational programs. Of course, Citizens Academy is one, hosted by Communications, and the other two being Fire and PD's. And so once a citizen does complete all three, we help coordinate recognition of their achievement. It is an achievement, it takes a lot of time and energy, and we like to recognize them for choosing to spend their time wisely in this area. And again, the fun doesn't stop there. We did initiate a few years ago an alumni program, specifically for our department's program. We like to stay connected with them. For one, there's a lot of new updates to those information that was originally shared with them. One of the ways that we like to do that is through our Alumni Lunch, and in the upper-left corner, you'll see a photo there. That is one of the most popular ones that we offer each year, and it, of course, features our own city manager giving a summary from our mayor's state of the city right afterward. It is each November. So of course, our department does like to priorities, prioritize community engagements. In-person events and interaction is simply always going to be a priority, no matter what we do, no matter the increasing digital trends that are coming up. And so one of the newer ones that we were asked, and it's very excited to be a part of, was an eighth-grade regional job career fair. And we got to talk, as you can see, every single city communications staff member about what we do as a department, but also what we do here in local government. And so to speak into the next generation about that was really, really an honor. And of course, there's many other opportunities, including talking to our local media partners that we like to do each year. Okay, so I want to pause and move into a different section. I like to highlight this program because it is very important. It also answers that question about our infographic earlier, about why we have about 21% of our sources being dedicated towards the area of public safety. And so a few years ago, I challenged us to kind of look at this, and of course, with city manager's support, we were able to initiate this new role, newer role, called a Public Safety Communications Manager. And so who better to have that and help us bring those resources to fruition than Lauren Moe? And so without further ado, I wanted to ask her to come and talk a little bit about what all that entailed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Happy New Year. I'm excited to be here. The Public Safety Communications Manager position started about three years ago. I work very closely with Ashley and the communications team, but I'm also very ingrained in PD and Fire as well. And I'm surrounded by great people that have given me the opportunity to be part of planning meetings and coordinating events, and of course, helping win crisis communication. So a couple of events that I've had the opportunity to work with these wonderful people on are our Up and Coming Female Leadership Conference. We held our second one this last summer. We invite teenage young ladies to come out, and they get exposed to different job experiences, they get to do mock interviews, and really get that firsthand knowledge of how to prepare for that next phase of life after they graduate high school. Another one that we will be doing, I think it's our fourth year, is the Casting with Cops. We invite children throughout the community to come out, and they have the opportunity to go fishing with our local law enforcement. This year, we did a new event, which was our smoke detector drive. We partnered with Walmart, and we did that a couple months ago in October for Fire Prevention Month, and we were able to get, I think, between 150 to 200 smoke detectors while we were out there that day. And in addition to that, the Fire Department didn't bring back their Fire Prevention Show, excuse me, and we were able to bring in the communications team to record it, get the audio, and upload it to our channel as well, so people can view that that weren't able to attend. So over the last year, myself, along with my partner, David Broger, and then also Fire Command Staff, we responded to over 200 media inquiries from local media. This does not capture national media or international media on different events that we received inquiries on, whether it was Hurricane Barrel, the plane crash. This is solely local media inquiries, so you can see it's about a daily interaction that we have with our local media partners. Hurricane Barrel was a six-day preparation. Mayor and I worked very closely together during that. I think everybody was pretty fatigued, the barrel fatigue, after we were in the EOC for several days preparing for that. One thing that we did want to touch on most recently was the plane crash on December 11th. I know that Rick McBrer and some others have come up and provided a high-level overview of the incident. Just wanted to take a deep dive on what we experienced on the communications side in response to that crisis communication. The crash, I believe, happened around 3:00 PM. We had our first update by 3:11, second update by 3:25, our third update by 3:45, and we had a press conference live and ready by 5:00 o'clock. So we, it took all of us to come together and collaborate. PD, Fire, Communications came out, EOC, you saw the picture, there's several people there, but it really was a great opportunity to see the relationships that came together and all the team building that we've been doing in preparing for that moment. It was really seamless, and it was a proud moment, I believe, for all of us. Thank you so much.
I just want to say real quick before we move on from this section, it truly was a collaborative effort. We have built so many great relationships amongst this collaborative response group that all it took was one call to let us know this was going on, and I instantly knew, okay, we need to activate our staff, and we need to support Lauren, Chief Moya, David Broger, Fire Department, everyone on scene. I mean, it was all hands on deck, and it was a great response. So again, kudos to them and the whole group. One last thing I wanted to mention again is, while we are very excited to continue growing this position and the embedded program, Lauren will actually be leaving us, you guys, to go to an awesome, exciting opportunity with the Victoria Office of Emergency Management. So again, we thank her for helping bring this position up to fruition.
What?
Round of applause, no. And we just wish her all the best, but we do continue to work hand in hand in this community, and so I look forward to continue doing that while also building this position and program. So, all right, are y'all ready for the next section? We're going to move on to the right for information channels. So that's a lot of data right there, a lot of big numbers. The red indicates specifically communications department's owned pages, social media channels. The blue does indicate citywide, so we do have access to all city department's pages. And the one that I want to call out is 100% growth in communication video views. Primarily, we had a lot going on in bicentennial. We produced some pretty high-quality videos, and the traction that we had during the year because of all the attention happening, we were able to build that momentum through some of the popular videos, one of which you're going to see a clip here in just a second. And so without further ado, I'm going to show you guys a clip of that, some of our top three.
Hey, I'm Chief Fox, welcome to VFD Cribs. Our latest installment of our newest fire station. Follow me.
Believe it or not, we've been making some serious headway this year on street projects. For instance, Crestwood Drive, that's right, we recently finished the third and final phase of this project. Looks pretty good, doesn't it?
It all started here, a tiny Mexican settlement on the Guadalupe River. Two hundred years ago, Martine De Lean.
And Patricia de la Garza. So of course, we know video remains king, and if you want to catch the full video, of course, I wasn't going to play all of them here in council, but you can watch them on YouTube at Victoria Texas Videos. So the other fun effort, a different way of communicating with residents, that we launched recently this past year, is our new expanded City Alert Center. So this allows us to directly communicate with both utility and waste customers with targeted notifications about all of the different city services. We do so through, based on their residence, so this software does give us the ability to geo-target, which we've never had before. I'm very excited to bring this to fruition, and I want to thank Environmental Services Department, Public Works, and IT, of course, for helping make this a reality for our residents. It is a big deal, and we're looking forward to continue building it out. There's so many other optional alerts that they can sign up for, like city news, road closures, and so much more, so that's another fun thing we brought to fruition this year. And so as you can see, there's a lot of different ways that we communicate with our residents. Of course, the written word is another way. We have a stellar writer named Sam Hankins, if you haven't met her, and she does all of our content, you guys. If you didn't see that number, that's 200 a year or more, if I remember. And so some of the most engaged news releases are positioned here, and of course, we know that our community cares about the Duck Pond. Last year, it was more about a new retailer that opened up, and so every year, we like to look at these top three engaged news releases and see what is working, what's not, but also what does our community care about? And they really like to see some of those recreation and amenities that are available to them for their friends and family to enjoy. Okay, this is a fun section, Team Awards. Let me just say that when we get the acknowledgement that what we do from our community is appreciated, that helps motivate us and inspire us to keep doing what we're already passionate about doing. But more importantly, it does help put Victoria more so on the map across the state. This is a statewide list of awards, by the way. In the past, we've often, we've also awarded, been awarded, national awards. And so this does help bring more recognition to Victoria, in case others haven't necessarily heard about it, but even more so than that, it does help instill community pride. It gives people a sense of place, a sense of identity to tap onto and to feel like they're part of that. And so if we can do that more and more, I think we're doing all right. For those newer council members, last year, we did launch a newsroom webpage, and what that is, is a centralized webpage on our main website that basically is a central hub of information that most anyone, if they have access to internet, can access. You can subscribe to these various information sources that we provide to our residents, and you can follow us, do all the things, even sign up for the new City Alert Center here. And so the reason I brought this up is because we do remain the number-two most-visited webpage, aside from the homepage, so. Okay, the last fun effort I wanted to talk about is our brand-new Town Talk podcast. If you haven't heard of it, or seen it, or anything about it, I do have a slide with a brief clip I'd like to show you, but I did want to say that when staff and I first started thinking about what we wanted to do here, whether we wanted to do it a few years ago, then we said, yes, we want to do this. Okay, well, now what does it look like? What does it feel like? We sat down and storyboarded. We said, well, we need We said, well, we need to look at some of the other contending podcasts, you know, that are popular and that are really common today. We want to make sure that we're maintaining that standard of expectation to the public. And so we did just that. We wanted to make sure that it was modern, it was relevant, and it was, yes, insightful as an educational development tool, but it was also entertaining. We know that podcasts have become extremely important, and it is growing significantly every year. I think I read half a billion worldwide users. And so that is significant since COVID, since the pandemic. And so if we're providing another tool for our residents to learn about what we do in an engaging manner, kind of like a fly on the wall, I like to say, then maybe they can learn a little bit better that way. And we know that that's becoming more and more an educational tool for people. So here's a clip, if you haven't heard it, and kind of how it started.
Well, I think, I think the idea, not I think, the concept of focusing more on growing our community really came out of the budget conversations, right? And what we were mentioning earlier about having limited resources. And the reality is that there is a positive correlation between growth in a city and their finances, right? And it's pretty simple, right? Obviously, the more people that live in a community, that's the more property that is being bought up and the values, and so generates more property tax revenue. More people living in your community contributes more towards, you know, retail, all these other things that also create and enhance our sales tax revenue side of the house.
So of course, we wouldn't be able to do any of our episodes without the wealth of knowledge that our guests have. And so you saw in the prior photos, we had our city manager, a few others. We had Danielle, our Economic Development Director. And they just have so much insight into their worlds that we even get to sit in on and learn more about. And so we are very glad to be able to bring that to the community. And this guy over here is a wealth of knowledge. So to have him on the show was really awesome. So we look forward to more episodes. All right, so enough about all the accomplishments. What are our challenges? To be quite honest, we are experiencing a bit of a plateau in this area simply because the demand for the services, everything that you see on that first upper-left-hand corner is being outpaced by the available resources that we have. We are a department of seven, and while that does sound like a lot, there are other cities in comparable sizes that have twice that. I was just talking to Jesus about that today as I explored this report. And so some of the results of that is ending up being that we are, not only ourselves, but other city departments often outsourcing these services. When I say services, I'm talking marketing and communication services, from consultation to strategic thought, to messaging, to written content, to photography coverage of events, to videography, which takes a lot of time. And you can see right here that the costs, this was a report that I did last year, so we don't have 2024 numbers yet. But you can see that they just have significantly increased. And the more data that we have on this, the more that we look at this, the more that it's becoming an apparent need to not only keep up with the demand, but to also reduce those outsourced resources, costs. And so what are some of the opportunities that we have with that? Well, of course, I mentioned the embedded program. If you look at that first pie chart on the left of the infographic, you see again that 21% is public safety. That's because we have a Lauren Mo, and we will have a Communications Manager for those departments. That is part of the embedded program. As we go into future years, to continue to deliver quality services to the public, we're looking at wanting to add several in the future, very near future. We already see the demand for environmental services, right? With the trash schedule pickup changes and delays. And while we do have the software and resources here to do it, we need the bodies to be able to put the content together, to do the things that need to be put out to the public. And I mentioned environmental services. I did want to also mention Public Works, because as you all know, there is a lot of exciting new roadway, of course, with city manager's goal to hit, I don't know how many miles off the top of my head, but a lot, it's a significant amount. As we continue to need to proactively put that out to the public, it will continue to also be a challenge with the limited resources, not only for putting it out in a mass notification, but also the graphic design needs that come with that. And so I think it's an excellent goal that we have. We're just coming up to that struggle, that challenge. Okay, I wanted to also mention economic development is in there. Okay, so the next opportunity that we have is the ongoing need for equipment and a studio. With our department, we're often dealing with the need for technology. And as you all know, that does require upgrades every few years, if you will, like three to five. Five is James's average. But with that, we're seeing a lot of new evolving technologies and methods of communicating information, too, that will always be something that we're trying to strive to at least stay on top of, and then even more so, stay ahead of if we can. And so one of the methods to do so, that would require a more efficiency manner in doing so and quick timeliness, less resources, less staff time to set up and tear down, would be a dedicated studio. And I'm kind of chuckling, thinking to myself, should I tell them this? And I'm going to go ahead and say it. Our Town Talk set looks amazing. It is my former office. Now I share that set with my office. And as you can imagine, that does provide with itself some challenges to do both. And so it was a short-term solution to be able to bring this podcast, this vision that we've had for years, to fruition. I said, we're going to do it. We're going to bring it up and make it get on its legs. And so it's not the long-term viable solution, but it does help us in the medium, in the intermediate. The last thing I want to say about that is a dedicated studio will help us with all different city departments' services beyond a podcast. So with that, I want to say thank you very much for hearing me. Very proud of the work that we do, this community, you all, our city manager's office, and then everyone who's sitting right here, because I think they're all part of COMS. So thank you again, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, well-deserved applause. You know, our communications team continues to do a great job, and the product is always professional. And you guys helped make the city look good. We definitely appreciate it, so.
All right, yeah, they 100% do. And I just want to take a minute just to thank Ashley and her leadership. It still boggles my mind how just five and a half years ago, this department didn't exist in its existing iteration, you know? When I arrived five and a half years ago, Communications was a combined department with our Convention Visitors Bureau. And one of the very first reorgs that we undertook was splitting that up so that Convention Visitors Bureau could solely focus on their scope, and we could expand everything that you've seen expanded over the last five years. And that's on the up and up. And that's why this department in particular is in a position to where that up and up is the priority for that department, specifically with personnel. And as I pointed out at the beginning of these annual reports, I want to make it as easy for you in the public to understand what the needs of the departments are. And obviously, for Communications Department, it's the personnel piece, because this department is new, and it's on the up and up. The studio element of it, we hope to include as part of the renovation of the building that we're in now. And so when municipal court and police move to the new building, the idea is to renovate this space. It is very common for these studios to be just off to the side of like a council chamber, because as you can imagine, there's a lot of overlap with the technology and the need for the personnel to be sitting where they are now and the studio. And so that is coming. But thank you, very proud. We were just talking about this yesterday. You know, I personally feel very proud of Ashley and the work that she's done. She was the first executive hire that I had a little over five years ago, and so awesome work. So thank you.
Can I throw something in, too? Everything about that report was great, except for the news on Ms. Mo. We will miss you, but wish you best of luck, certainly.
I forgot about it. No, I'm just kidding. All right, so next up, of course, we're going to hit on library. And so Jessica's going to kick it off.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you all for the opportunity to provide you with the library annual report. As Jesus had said, we're going to talk about some successes. We're going to talk about some challenges. But I also want, I'm hoping that this report will show you just how people use the library. I want to start off with a quick reminder of, as soon as this, uh-oh, once again. There you go. I wanted to start off with just a reminder of our vision and mission statement, and that our hope is that the library is the welcoming heart of our community, where all come together to imagine, discover, and connect. You all are familiar with our mission statement and our priorities that are embedded in that. And you'll see these words throughout the presentation, which is our goals are that we prioritize access to technology and resources, fostering community's support for learning and reading and personal development, and serving as a reliable anchor. Hopefully, the presentation will show you just how we do that and that we did that this past year. So improving access to technology and resources. Here's just a snapshot of some of the things that we introduced, which is our anytime pickup lockers, and our newly renovated, our new tables and chairs in the computer areas. So technology impact, just a higher view of snapshot of last fiscal year, 2024. We saw over 17,000 computer sessions. What is that? That is when somebody comes into the library and logs into our desktop computers or laptops. Computer questions, those are the things where people come in and say, I need to create a resume. Where do I find that? How do I get this information online? So this is the quick ready reference where our team goes to the computer and helps our patrons with computer questions. Wi-Fi sessions and website visits, that's where we're seeing a big increase. I won't go into a lot of detail, but when I say that, this is, I wanted to provide some visuals that show it. So our Wi-Fi stats, those are people logging into our free Wi-Fi. As you can see, these last five years, it has jumped. We have really fast internet. I'm just going to say that, well, I'm bragging about it. But we have really good Wi-Fi speed. So as you can see, we are a reliable source in someplace that some people will come to, to use the Wi-Fi.
We should go have our council meetings over there.
Yes, you can. And then our website visits. As you can see, there's an increase in website visits. Why is that? Well, because we offer our library catalog, where people can go renew, check out, reserve items, just log into the library catalog and do much of the services themselves. They can reserve our meeting rooms. They can just go on our website to see what's going on at the library. And so you can see that we're seeing a trend where people are using the website more and more. And please feel free to stop me at any time, because I know I'm just blowing through this. Access to library materials. As you can see, that is our ribbon cutting. Those were very large scissors. Thank you Parks and Rec for letting us borrow those. We installed the anytime pickup locker at the library, and we secured that funding for over $41,000. We did get the second grant to have the off-site location in the north side of town, which is the mall. We're in the works of completing that project. But as you can see, we are extending our reach and extending our services by adding these anytime pickup lockers. So I wanted to provide you with, what does that look like? So since the launch of these anytime pickup lockers since March 2024, as you can see, these are all the reserves that we've had, and it continues to grow. That means these are people that maybe not, don't want to come into the library or want to get access to our collection, but it's after hours or when the library is closed. So you can see that the community is finding out about it, and they're using it. And it did provide, I did provide more of a snapshot than fiscal year 2024, but I wanted y'all to see the data that it is getting used. And when it comes to, again, our technology and our services, this is our digital materials and users. So these are our app-based collection. So that means you download an app from your App Store, these apps, and you type in your library card, and these are the resources that you have available to you. So as you can see, these are, users are registered library card users on these apps that we provide. Items available is items that are available for checkout. Doesn't mean necessarily that we own the item, but they are available. So Libby is the one we've had since 2010. Yes, so as you can see, there is a lot more users there. Hoopla, we introduced in 2022, and users are, it's climbing. And what we're noticing is this is our video and movie DVD streaming service as well. So this is grown in popularity, not only with eBooks and audiobooks, but some streaming movies, things like that, offering those type of items. And then our newest one is Cloud Library that we just introduced in 2023. Our users still aren't comfortable with it yet, but as you can see, we continue to see people registering for that one as well. Circulation, number of checkouts. I wanted to show this. This is the number of checkouts of, yes, number of checkouts. What that means is, this is not the amount of items we have. This is just the checkouts that we have. So typically, our physical collection, we have about 100,000 items. So that shows you right there that that is, you know, a lot more than that. But I wanted to show the checkouts of physical materials dropped a little bit this past year, but as you can see, our digital collection is growing. And what I wanted to show here is just that expanding of services. We don't have to house a lot of these materials on the shelves, but we have them available through the online platform. Fostering community awareness and support. These pictures, images are from our September Show Your Library Card Promotion. The picture on the left is the Library Advisory Board, Mayor Crocker in the middle, and our Friends of the Library Board as well in the picture to the right. And I just want to thank the people in the pictures, but also the community itself and the local businesses that offered the discount for Show Your Library Card Promotion. This was a successful promotion in that people came in to not only get a library card, but renew. This was that reminder for them, oh, I need to renew my card. So it was successful. We did see, it was over, I want to say over 100 that one month. So we got to see renewals and new cards. Community awareness, how are we getting out there and telling people about what we do and just reminding them that the library is there? So reference requests, that means, what that is, is that that's any time a community member asks us a question, whether it be something as simple as, can you help me find information on this? Can you help me find a book on this? Well, it's not only people walking in to the library asking us questions. It's email, phone calls, text messages, and curbside questions. So these are just all the different ways that we're able to provide, you know, at least help and direction of questions that they have. Our, this past fiscal year, we saw 3,200 new cardholders, but with the total totaling over 36,000 cardholders, registered cardholders that we have active in the library right now. And our outreach events, this is when we are partnering, doing, not partnering, doing booths, informational booths, activity booths outside of the library. We were able to go to 132 outreach events. Partnership events, that's when we partner with other community members. We've had 151 events. And then school tours that we offer all year long, we were able to welcome in 460 students. And these are not only talking about our library resources and services and what we have to offer, but it's just reminding people what we have. And again, this is introducing, we have activities, we have storytimes, we have just all the things that we have. I'd like to take an opportunity, when it comes to fostering community awareness and support, to recognize the Friends of the Victoria Public Library. As Harley said earlier, they're about to gear up for their next annual book sale. But I wanted to just show that they worked over 1,000 hours of volunteer hours where there'd be those three annual book sales. They sort books and materials weekly at the library. You will see them at booths. They will have a booth at all the library events and outreach activities, not only talking about why you should be a friend of the library, but talking about their, the 1,000 books before kindergarten, where I'll talk about that later, and just encouraging people to come use the library. They funded the new computer tables and chairs in the computer area, which you see that picture right there. And they fund some of our larger programs, like the Summer Reading Program and the Gingerbread House program. So I want to thank them for another successful year of fundraising. Several of the board members are in the audience right now. I asked them not to cheer and do a wave, but they're here, too. So thank you all for the support and another successful year. Inspire personal development. What have we done? Let's see. We welcomed over 154,000 visitors in the library. So oftentimes, people ask, how do people use the library? When do they come to the library? We average about 400 visitors a day. In the summertime, that doubles, so we'll see about 800 visitors a day. Our programs, we saw over 28,000 attendees to our programs. And again, this is just, how are we inspiring personal development is that we're there. The library is there, you come in, you find information or whatever interests you. You attend one of our programs, our knitting event, our collage nights. It's just different things that we offer. And then interlibrary loan, if we don't have anything, if we don't have a certain item on the shelf, we will borrow it from another library for you. So we will find ways to provide the services you need. So we borrowed 2,000 items from other libraries, and we sent out and lent out. So we, we borrowed 2,000 items from other libraries, and we sent out and lent out 3,000 items for other libraries as well. Our Ready to Read Initiative. As you all know or may not know, we offer baby time and storytimes all year long at the library, as well as our, we visit eight daycares a month. So as you can see, we welcome, we saw over 4,000 attendees at our storytimes. The 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten Program that is funded by the Friends of the Library, studies have showed that if you read 1,000 books to your child before the day, first day of kindergarten, they are well ahead of the game and ready to go, so we are encouraging that program as well. And our summer reading program, that is our, I would say our most high-energy time of the year. And when I say that, I, I want to show you that, or tell you that usually every month, we, we offer 25 to 30 programs, and we see, you know, several hundred people. In June, we had 54 programs, and in July, we had 53 programs. In June, we saw 4,600 people come to our programs, in July, we saw 4,196. So we offer programs all year long, but June and July is our go-time. So we offer you, we just invite you to all to come to some of our programs and just see how fun they are. And then this is a snapshot of a fiscal year, what programming looks like. As you can see, our most attended is our children family programs, but I just wanted you all to know that teens do come to our youth programs as well. And adult programming, we're seeing a lot of growth with children, teen and adult program, programming since 2019, and the, the numbers continue to go up. So yes, we are known for our, our family programming, but the other numbers are growing, going up as well. Serve as a community anchor. My team, or the library team, has done a great, great job at being very creative on some of the things that, where we reuse space and do different things with. So part of strategic plan is just, again, and our master plan is that access to technology and just the space that we have. There was some requests for homework places, homework spaces, so you'll see that they reworked some of our, our tables and putting dry erase contact paper on them. So we created like homework places. So we have dry erase markers and erasers at the desk, and anybody can come in and say, I, I need to use that to do my homework. We encourage people to come study. We've seen tutors come and use those tables. So we tried to make homework-type spaces. We added a smart TV to the storytime room. We have our meeting room, Meeting Room A, that is really high popular usage, and they use the TV in there. So this is just our way to add that service to another room that you can reserve, but we're hoping that our storytime team can also incorporate educational songs and maybe a few visual things into the, into their storytimes, since it's in the room as well. And then, as you can see, that is a, the picture at the bottom is the dedicated teen space. What we encourage is that teens will come do homework or just hang out, but it's just creating spaces for them at the library. Our meeting rooms, we continue to see growth with this since we have our online reservation platform. The past few years, we've seen probably neck and neck of like staff programs or library events and patron community reservations, but this year, we saw a clear jump when it come to patron and community reservations. So as you can see, we have four dedicated spaces, just, just spaces, and the rooms continue to be used all the time. It's very rare if we don't have a reservation in one of the rooms. So all of our reservation rooms, I mean, all of our dedicated spaces, there's always somebody reserving some space daily.
Jessica, in the online reservation system, we just started that, was it two years ago?
Yes. And since we streamlined that process, and it's just you go online, hit the button and reserve the room yourself, and wait for us to approve it, it just made it so much easier. So we do have a lot of reoccurring, like study groups and different things, but also we have a lot of new people where they cut, people will say, I, I need a space, and word of mouth has really spread, and, oh, try the library, try the library. The process is pretty easy, and we continue to see growth there as well. So some highlights, some just, some things that I wanted to just talk about is, we've, we're able, with y'all's support, we were able to secure the funding for AV setup in the Bronte Room. So this project has been on hold for a couple of years, when the sound system, so we're so excited that the project is gonna get started soon. With our, our new 3D printer, I'm sorry, we were able to 3D print 24 computer mounts. As you see, the, the blue picture is the file, and then the picture next to it is what it looks like at the desk. So with our new computer desk, we were, we were trying to figure out how to create more usable space. And so kudos to IT, they were, they were able to find these boxes that we could secure the computer box to the back of the table, and they said, well, it's gonna cost $1,000, but we got the file, the 3D file, if you want to print the 3D, print them yourself. So our team, 3D printed 24 computer mounts, and the cost was $60. So we were, we were kind of excited to do that, and that was a great collaboration with the IT team.
Are there other libraries that we could maybe make some and sell them to?
You know, be ready for that to be on the website, and the, the statistics are gonna go right up. And then, as you can see, we, the, the picture at the bottom, we had an aging self-checkout machine, and we removed it, and we were able to get two new self-checkout machines right there. And if you can see the, the kiosk to the right, that little screen, that is the paperless signup for a library card, right there. So we're getting really high tech at the library. Come use it. I encourage you to come and check it out. And then, oh, I, I'm going into challenges, sorry, I got click, got a little clicky here. So challenges, what are we seeing? What are some of the things that, and it's facility, our, our facility maintenance, we're seeing some roof damage and issues. The picture to the left and the, and the picture in the middle, those are leaks upstairs that are not very visible to the public. The one to the right is closer to, that leak is closer to the Goodwin Main Street side of the library, and that one is more visible, as you can see right there. But these aren't long-term solutions, but this is what it has to be right now because anytime any rain comes, we've, we've replaced countless tiles, and it's just what it, where it is right now. And then modern spaces, you know, we are, spaces challenged for us. We've already reduced the footprint of the service desk, and, you know, those pictures where, where we showed you, where I showed you, where we're reworking some spaces, we're trying to just, you know, do what we can with what we have. So those are some facility challenges. And then service and capacity. Or, as you can see, the digital collection, the demand is going up, people are finding that, but the cost of our digital collection is not going down. So the cost of e-materials are going up, so we're seeing that. It's like, how can we meet the demand and try to convince all these e, the platforms to lower their cost? It's not happened yet. Self-service wireless printing, we do have a system in place, which is Smart Alec. It's an aging system, and it doesn't work how it needs to all the time, and we're on the market to look for something new, but what we're seeing is every, people coming in with their device, saying, I need to print from my phone, I need to print from my phone. So we need to look at some newer software that might help us with that. Library card, a library vehicle, we do have a van that we use, the, it's just a, it's supposed to be used for book drops and running errands, but we're also now using it for outreach, going to daycares, picking up supplies. We do go to some senior living facilities with books so they can check out, but we're using the vans 600 to 700 times a year, and we have a schedule where the team is trying to, who has a van? Who can, and we have, sometimes have, my programming team, youth program team, is sometimes waiting outside for the people to come back from book drop so they can go to their program. So just some issues with, how do you have 25 people share one car to do outreach events? So those are just some of the, the challenges that, that I'd like to address during this time. Looking ahead, some things that are happening. Well, the new anytime pickup locker at the Victoria Mall, it's there, it's sitting there, it's not wrapped or fully operational yet, but we're working on it. So please look out for that date when we launch that. Summer Fun Fest, our summer kickoff, is gonna be May 31st, so please look out for some information on that as well. And then on October 4th is the library's birthday and anniversary. Before October 4th, 50 years ago, it was the Victoria Bronte Library, so Victoria Public Library turns 50. So please look out and see, we're hoping to have programs and events that are, that are around the celebration. So they turn 50, not me, the building and the Victoria Public Library. Some master plan projects in 2026 and things, looking ahead, what, what we're working on. So we are, we are looking and trying to pursue a grant for a bookmobile. These are, these smaller vehicles are called sprinters. So as I mentioned before, you know, we are in need for more wheels, and so we are looking at applying for a bookmobile grant. The exterior improvement, cut down the existing wall from the handicap ramp. As you can see, those walls are pretty thick, and sometimes if you look at the liberty side of the building, it's hard to even see where the ramp is. So sometimes people are, ask about that. So with the master plan, it, it mentioned about, you know, having more of a rail so that you can see the, and this past year, what we're seeing is that it, we've seen a lot more homeless activity at night, in the middle of the night, so we've had to clean up things in the morning, things like that. So we're looking at solutions on how to open that up, and then, and just do some master plan projects with that as well. And future needs, we're, we're hoping that the booklocker at the Victoria Mall will show us some interest there and see how much it's being used. So we also want to look at, how can we potentially look at a satellite location in the north side of town? So we're still actively looking at that, just to see, you know, what the needs are there, because that is part of the master plan, is part of extending our reach and services. And exploring other options for adding the multipurpose outdoor space. That picture is from the library master plan, where it talked about activating that space that's on the corner of Goodwin and Main Street, and just an idea of what, what it could look like. This is the time that I wanted to just thank you all, Mayor and Council, for the support that you've given us this year, to have another successful year. And also thank the staff, or my team at Victoria Public Library on another great year, and just providing that space for our community to imagine, discover, and connect. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Obviously, it was a very good year for the library, so does anybody have questions? No, all right, well, thanks to you and your staff for continuing to be a valuable asset for our community, we appreciate it.
Stay there for a second. So I just want to take a moment to also thank Jessica for her, for her leadership, because you may or may not recall that in fiscal year '22, we actually reduced the number of employees at the library by two. And so literally over the last few years, under Jessica's leadership, we've been able to literally do more with less at the library, as you can just tell. And so thank you for your leadership on that front. As you can see by her presentation, right, the needs for the library are facility in nature, not necessarily personnel, right? And so to my point, I want to make it as easy for everybody to understand what the needs are for each department, and so today hopefully gave you a sense of what to expect in future presentations from different departments to help all of us understand, is it personnel? Is it equipment? Is it facilities? But thank you so much for your leadership as we work through it. Obviously, addressing the facilities needs for the library gets a little bit trickier since we don't own the building. Probably goes without saying that it's important to collaborate with the owner of the building, which is Victoria County, especially to address some critical needs such as the roof. In case you're wondering, what's the status of that? What does that look like? What's the solution? We realized that, that the issue might be a little bit more robust than what we realized, and so we've had to hire, actually hire a structural engineer to look at the integrity of the building to make a recommendation on what can act, what actually needs to take place to properly fix and/or replace the roof. And so we're going through that assessment now, and so we anticipate that over the course of the next couple of months, we'll have some more information to be able to share with you and Victoria County on how to address that pressing issue there.
And thank you, Jesus.
No, thank you.
All right, very good. I believe that reaches then the end of our agenda.
Yes, sir.
We will have an executive session.
Yes, sir.
So it is 6:42, we will conclude the public portion of the meeting, we'll take a 10-minute break, and then reconvene into executive session at that time.
City Council recess for executive session on the 7th day of January 2025 at 6:42. Subject matters as follows. Text the government code 551.087, 551.072, and 551.071.